Okay, Joe, let's start with the role if you would.
Mr. Livingston. Mr. Nath.
Here.
Mr. Declois.
Here.
Mr. Lennon.
Here.
Ms. Maruley.
Absent.
And Mr. Tolmer.
Here.
Okay. Uh, we do not, just confirming Joe, I don't, uh, we didn't have minutes from the June meeting, is that right? Nothing to approve on that side of things?
No, uh, their Cheryl hasn't prepared them yet, so I'll have them for your next meeting.
Okay. Okay, any old business to be discussed tonight? Okay, move into new business. Um. Purpose of today's call is to, so just to, to refresh the, the scene for folks who have been in and out of these calls. We've been going over the last couple of months, several planning commission meetings, a process of identifying first of all, what were some of the bigger ticket items that we wanted to request budget for in the twenty one, twenty twenty one calendar year? And those concepts boil down to eleven main concepts that were represented by various members of the planning commission over the last several months worth of meetings to generally scope out and give a little bit of detail to what those concepts were. Enough that the, excuse me, the collective planning commission could look at those, those concepts and score them each individually. Based on metrics of the value, anticipated value to the community on one axis and the other axis being anticipated cost. Um, and I'll, I'll share my screen, Joe, if you don't mind stopping your share. Oh, yeah, you're good. Okay. So if we flip to that first tab on the bottom left there, just for purposes of transparency and insight. Um, the six existing planning commission members went through each one of those concepts. A lot of you guys were on those calls and we individually scored each one of those according to the community value and cost, again, anticipated best guess right now. And then the matrix tab, Joe, if you would flip over to that, gives a feel for how all those things shook out. Uh, you can see a lot of things obviously concentrated on the right-hand side of anticipated value. I think it makes sense that we wouldn't spend a whole bunch of time talking about things that didn't have any anticipated value. Upper right would be those high-value, high-cost items, so leading the charge there, traffic mitigation on the north end and Baldwin Street for sure, just from a cost perspective are gonna be in the nine and ten range. Uh, bottom below that, then that square is high value, a little bit less cost, so traffic study, pedestrian safety issues, you see the borough cleanup one landed there as well. So everybody has had the opportunity to score those things individually and they've had the last several weeks following last meeting to look at each other's scores, get a feel for how things shook out collectively across. Planning Commission. Purpose of tonight's meeting now, we left every, uh, we left last meeting, everybody having to remit to think about what are their top three of the eleven concepts that they would like to put forward for further consideration and formal budget requests. So we're getting to that point now, we're whittling down to collectively as a planning commission, here's the top three priorities that we wanna look for funding for. So with that said, I will share at this point, Joe, because I've got a quick just scoring slide that will facilitate the discussion. Stop yours here, I'll grab it. Okay, share my screen. Let me know if you guys have my screen now, it's just a simple PowerPoint slide.
Do not. I'm also sharing, so maybe that would help.
There you go.
Good? Now I'll put it in display mode, just so you can see it a little bit larger, then I'll back out to make edits. So very simple scoreboard, right? I'll take the colors from each one of the representatives here and just paste them wherever we decide to place our, our votes for the top three. Uh, because Dale and Justine are not here tonight, they did give me their, uh, scores before this evening, you can see them represented there. So Dale is casting his vote for the traffic study, pedestrian safety issues and the new comprehensive plan. Justine put her votes in for new comprehensive plan, traffic mitigation on the north end, and traffic studies. I did want to switch over very quickly to, uh, Justine did share some, some thoughts around why she voted the way that she did. And hopefully in our conversation in this meeting tonight, we'll share some of these verbally, but just so we have a feel for how our, our other peers in the planning commission voted. So with respect to the updated comprehensive plan. Uh, you can see some of her comments there, I won't read them to you guys verbatim, but I did wanna give you a chance to gloss over them and see what she was thinking. Traffic studies was, uh, that was actually hers and I know we, we heard from her, she's got some passion around the traffic study idea. And then the north end, which we did mention, was presented by Joe right before he, uh, resigned his planning commission to take the borough manager job. Okay, anybody wanna spend more time with that, or does it give you a good feel for where Justine's coming from? Dale just submitted his simply via email, so not a whole lot of, uh, additional context to them. Okay, so with that backdrop, I'm gonna back out of display mode, just so I can put the, the buttons with each one of the votes as we move forward. Let's just go in order, if everybody's okay with that, as I've got them across the bottom here. So Dick, you'd be up first, if you wanna share your top three and whatever reasoning you wanna give around that. I can't see the participants at this point, so somebody tell me if it is muted.
Dick's on the phone.
Dick's muted.
He looks like he's muted. There you go.
Okay.
Um. I don't have my, I, I'm on my phone and I don't have my list with me, but the first one I think would be the comprehensive plan. Um. And I'm trying to think, yeah. In the other orders, I wasn't really planning on being part of your meeting tonight, I was supposed to be out of town.
I cannot, that's all right, Dick, I got your scoring sheet up, if it helps jog some thought, so you had pedestrian safety issues as a value of nine. You had.
Yeah, well, that would, that would be, um, right up there with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. You've got one left to go, you also had enhanced small-town charm as a nine. Parking issues as an eight. Borough cleanup as a nine. Evaluation of existing parcels as a four.
That, the, the, um, the parking would be the next one. The comprehensive plan, the parking.
Pedestrian safety issues.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I'm gonna throw mine out here, my first is the comprehensive plan as well. I shared that when I reviewed that last month, and I think it just makes good sense to get some expertise in here and with people who do this work for a living and can essentially do what we attempted to do over the last couple of months with a great additional rigor around that. Uh, and include some data and analytics around those things, so I, I just think it makes good sense to be leading with that information under our belt. Um, my second one is the compliance and code enforcement, we've talked about that even before we started this process. Uh, the value of having somebody who has the time and can dedicate to enforcing some of the, the codes that we've got in our books, I don't think we lack for good codes. Um, I think we lack a little bit on the implementation side of those things. Uh, and so I would be looking at, we talked about doing that as a shared cost model, if that's the most cost-effective approach to that. But I'm, I'm very much in favor of that, and my final one would be the traffic mitigation on the north end. Now that's a huge, huge effort, I'd be interested in thinking about if we can decompose that thing into something that has a multi-year approach, or maybe there are things that we can start this year. So, uh, if pressed today, I don't know what I would fill out in that business case for the actual funding that we're requesting, but I think we can get smart about that in the next month or two. Uh, if there's the votes for it with everybody else. All right, Larry?
Yeah, so my knee-jerk, uh, personally, I'd cast three votes for the new comprehensive plan. I think most of what we're talking about here is going to, has to be addressed by the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Uh, some of these items are very long lead items because of their expense. Uh, and frankly, they're gonna take a whole lot of thought, and I think a lot of that thought uh, is involved in preparing the comprehensive plan, so you only have room, so just stick two of them in there then and.
Uh, you can get it in there, that was well within the bounds, we said last time, if you wanted to throw all three, you can throw all three, tell me if you want me to move it, but don't let space be the prohibitor there.
The only other would be, I'm kind of, the parking issue, but again, uh, to me, the parking, the traffic, the pedestrian safety, those all are parts of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Uh, and I have a, a little bit of a concern about addressing things sort of in a vacuum outside of the comprehensive plan, because all of these things are completely interconnected.
Hmm.
And that's why I think that, uh, you know, we get the right consultant on board, uh, and the beauty of, of this exercise frankly is, in fact, that direction we go. We have almost a RFP prepared, these are the issues that are critical to us. Uh, so when we start down the road of hiring a consultant, they know exactly what our concerns are and.
Yeah.
You know. But, and again, I, I tend to think that it all starts with that, and, you know, some of our efforts in the past, uh, I think could have been better than what they were in terms of addressing some of these things.
Hmm.
It's kinda like Baldwin Street, we all know that's a long-term effort, it isn't just Baldwin Street, it's McLaughlin Run flooding in general. Uh, and that's gonna take a pretty comprehensive uh, look, uh, land use i- is a significant part of that, so.
Yeah.
Which is always part of a comprehensive plan.
Okay. What are your, so Larry, one follow-up question to that, I think we talked last time that, you know, that's likely even in itself of a multi-year, a year and a half, two-year effort that new comprehensive plans, so thoughts about things, things that we could tackle in the interim that won't set us back or cause rework while we're waiting for that to come out?
Uh, yeah, the cleanup, I mean, that's an obvious, uh, interim thing that probably wouldn't even be addressed by the comprehensive plan in all likelihood, uh. Enhancing the small-town charm, I mean, I don't see that as being something that we couldn't undertake.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that effort is comprised of, you know, whether it's a PR kind of a thing, or, uh, just what exactly it is, uh.
I think you're right that there's pieces of that, whether it's, you know, landscaping or the things that are, are not gonna be running afoul of whatever comes out of a new comprehensive plan.
Exactly, yeah, so, yeah, those are the kinds of things I think we could easily take on.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, you know, i- if, if you think in terms of you know, the planning commission members and the amount of time that any individual member has to devote to any of this.
Yeah.
Uh, and if you wanna get your best thought to bang for the buck, if you will, you know, I'm thinking that we all focus on the comprehensive plan. I mean, that's, uh, in my mind, that's gonna have the most impact on, on pretty much all of these topics.
Yeah, okay. All right, cool, Mike?
Well, since I have three votes, I can, I can like load up somewhere, can't I? No, I'm just kidding.
I just.
Hey Larry.
Yeah, right.
No, um, to, to go along with what Larry said, I mean, the planning commission is, is a roadmap and, you know, it solves, other things are wrapped up into that. So, you know, one of my votes is definitely gonna go to, to the planning, um, to the comprehensive plan. And then the other one, which, you know, I, to kinda go along with you, Tim, is the code enforcement, you know, it's kinda, everything's kinda connected. And I think if you do code enforcement, um, it solves problems that, you know, around town that, that might are connected to, to, to these types of issues that we're having on the other topics. So those are the two big ones for me. Um, if I was gonna throw my other one, only because it's near, you know, near and dear is, is, um, Baldwin Street, because of the flooding and whatnot. Um, but again, you know, a good comprehensive plan is gonna be included in that, so, but I will throw, I will throw a, a bean in there.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, just a question, Tim, and it's, uh, maybe an issue of confusion on my part, but, uh, for instance, the code enforcement, to me, that's an obligation of borough council. Uh, I'm not sure why we on the planning commission should be in a position of telling council, you need a code enforcement officer. I mean, to me, that's, they should, that, that should be a given. And that should be funded because it's an obligation of the council in any case, irrespective of what we might think. And I agree that it's, it's probably something that needs to be done, uh. You know, I know for the longest time uh, the borough manager was a co-enforcement officer, and the reason they did that was so that they could take the monies that were allocated for code enforcement and up the manager's salary and it tended to make sense.
Hmm.
As long as the manager had the time to do both jobs adequately. And I'm not saying they did or they didn't, you know, it's just that, you know, that was kind of how that played out, it's been you know, I can't even tell you how long, Dick, maybe you know, how many years has it been since we actually had a, a standalone code enforcement officer? I mean, I'm thinking twenty years ago.
It's, I'm gonna say twenty-five.
Yeah, that could well be.
So I'm curious if anybody from council or Joe, I know you're just stepping in day one here, but is that a function of the borough manager, um, on paper right now? It's a great question, Larry, I don't know where that resides with, with our borough.
Yeah, that's the job of the borough manager here in Bridgeville, and today's day one for me, like you said.
Yeah, yeah.
So Joe, that was part of your job description was code enforcement as well?
Yes, Larry.
Okay. And it, yeah, that's in a small borough, that can work, and I don't know that we're a small borough, big borough, but, I mean, it's sometimes that's a pretty tall order, because, you know, that can get to be quite involved. Uh, you know, if there's a lot of code enforcement issues, that can consume a lot of time.
My guess, I, you know, guess, you know, throwing my bean in that pot there, is, is to have council look at that position and see, is it something that you wanna have um, Joe do, or is it something that you wanna pull out and have somebody do as a separate entity? I don't know.
A ta- a separate entity, I, I, I'll tell you what, my heartburn, I've seen that many, many places over the years. Uh, it tends to be number one, very expensive. And number two, you end up with people that are, you just read the black letter of the law. And, you know, maybe that's what we want, maybe that's what we, not what we want, but, you know, y'all always have that, what I call small-town flavor. I mean, you don't wanna be cutting people breaks they don't deserve, but at the same time, you don't wanna be hammering people, people into the ground over issues.
Really?
I mean, you have to come at it with some kind of a sensibility, uh, in, in concern for the local people, I guess, is how I'll characterize it. If you go outside and hire one of these bigger firms, uh, you know, i- i- that can be very difficult, you lose some degree of control.
Sure.
And political accountability, if you will.
So what's the right way for us? I mean, as much as that's been a, a topic of discussion for, you know, over the, the course of the last couple of months, if that in fact is, you know, that budget is sitting with the borough and that rules with the borough manager, what, what what's the appropriate step for us from planning commission? Do we just frame that up for council and say, hey, we think there's, you know, a lot to be had here that we've been, you know, missing for the last couple of years? That money's not coming to the planning commission.
I can share you what my thoughts are, Tim, I mean, I think at this point, we leave that up to the borough manager and let him decide, I mean, let him get his feet wet.
Yeah.
See what all the issues are, uh, let him judge whether or not he feels, you know, four or five, six months down the road that he can continue to do both. And at the same time, is, you know, there's been a fair amount of discussion here in these meetings about things that planning commission members have observed, you know, potential violations. As long as we're keeping Joe appraised of what those are and give him an opportunity to go out and resolve them, I mean, personally, you know, I don't have any heartburn at all of having the borough manager do both jobs.
Hmm.
Question of, again, are there enough hours in a day or enough hours in a week, uh, to do them both justice? And I think, to me, the jury's out on that.
So we've got the luxury of having the borough manager here in this meeting and, in previous discussions about this topic, and he's the one taking the notes, so. Um, I mean, as much as we're a small, small town here with, you know, folks that are crossing lines from council to planning commission, I, I would just put that out there. Joe, council is something that obviously the planning commission has pointed to, is we think there's a, you know, a significant value to moving that needle from where we've come, and I, I think Larry's suggestion is a good one, to give a couple of months and get Joe's thoughts on, is that manageable, or do we need to look at a, a position?
Now, I, I think you guys are all spot on, uh, Larry hits home, uh, just because not only, uh, I, I live here, so I the actions I do during the day, I have to sleep with at night, a little more intimately than other people would. So, uh, give me some time and, uh, I'll keep you appraised, but, uh, I'm very confident that we can make some progress here, so just give me some time.
Hey, Tim? So, yeah.
Stop it. That being said, I'm gonna take my, uh, bean out of the code enforcement, and I'm gonna put it with pedestrian safety, because I'm gonna change my vote.
All right, so there's kinda two, two schools of thought here, one is, we've obviously all at least passed one vote for the comprehensive plan. And we know that that's gonna touch on everything here. Is that our budget request for twenty twenty-one, and we start to chip away at some of these smaller things that likely don't need a whole lot of funding? Uh, downtown aesthetics, the, the cleanup, or?
What was our assessment of pedestrian safety? Can I see that graphic again?
The slide for you, you mean?
Uh, the rating slide.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the matrix itself, well, no, I'm sorry, the scorecard.
Yep, right here.
Uh, no, matrix. There you go, so where is pedestrian safety? Oh, there it is, right there, so it was.
High, higher value, lower cost.
Okay. And I would agree, it is a higher value at lower cost. Uh, I, I we're not arguing one way or another, I'm just wondering what exactly it is that the planning commission would do to enhance pedestrian safety? I mean, would we have, would we contract for some kind of a pedestrian plan as opposed to a traffic plan? Uh, would we, uh, come up individually, uh, individual board members make recommendations for safety improvements, crosswalks, signage, whatever, is that what we're looking at, or?
Yeah, so I'm pulling up that actual scope, this was Dale's, but some of the potential solution ideas, he's got the review of crosswalks, marking and signage for in the particular core sightlines, increased signage with new highs, high visibility for distant sidewalks. Better or different roadway markings to assist drivers in recognizing crosswalks, that's interesting, 'cause I actually screamed at cars on Bank Street the other day after waiting ten minutes to be able to cross. Um, greatest sidewalk maintenance program to identify side, sidewalks in need of repair, so, yeah, it's, it's in line with what you were just saying.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess that is something the planning commission could do, we wouldn't necessarily need to go to an outside consultant. Although some of the pedestrian marking and signage, Joe, do we need the recommendation from a traffic engineer? Uh, I mean, I know to, to develop an ordinance and to be able to implement and regulate and enforce you need those kinds of plans. Is that, is that what we're talking about here, or are we talking about something a lot less formal than that?
Dale's thing was pretty much informal with some just signage, but, uh, we're doing ordinances, you know, my impression's the same as yours.
Yeah, if we're gonna go to an ordinance, I think you need some kind of professional recommendations, right? You need studies and recog- i- if you go to an ordinance, I, I think the intent is to have some ability to enforce. And if people violate, you wanna be able to enforce it. And I guess the violation would be, you know, vehicular, right? Or jaywalking, I guess, huh? Yeah, I'm just not sure that I have completely understand this, and it's only because I haven't thought it through, honestly.
I don't either.
I mean, I'm sorta leaning towards moving one of mine into pedestrian safety, Tim, I'm just kind of frankly arguing with myself right as a man.
Convincing yourself to do it.
Well, yeah, I guess, and I, 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 conceptually, I like the idea, just kinda struggling with the implementation of it.
Well, new comprehensive plan is locked in, so you can consider it a free vote.
There you go.
Free vote, as, as much as that concept picked up sidewalks, which was, I, I think that was a, a comment that I threw in during the review of that and some of the stuff up in the business district with, you know, cones and such. Uh, I can get behind that as well, I, I think that it's a pursuit worth taking on. If I've gotta throw away vote and code and compliance. So you know, driving, driving this exercise to some sort of conclusion, what, what are thoughts from the group on formal RFP budget requests related to new comprehensive plan? Second item there, we can scope out over the next month or two months, some of the pedestrian safety issues and think about, is that something we can take on by ourselves, does that get bigger, depending on that discussion? Table it there at those two things for formal budget requests. I think we can take on, it sounds like there's an interest, I'm not trying to talk anybody into one of my items, that we could take on the borough cleanup as a one-off, kind of, it doesn't cost hardly anything, and I think there was some interest in trying to do that within calendar year twenty twenty as well.
Yeah.
And that gives us a little bit of a slate of something to, to move forward in the next quarter here.
I don't, Tim, it's Pat de Blasio here. Um, I don't know when, when you were planning public comment, but you're coming close to making decisions and I'd certainly like a moment to, a- again, now I'm in front of a computer, so I can see what you're doing, um. But I'd certain, I'm, I don't know, I see Mr. Friar's out there, he might also like to make some public comment before you make your decision.
Yeah, so a couple of things, no decisions being formally made, right? All we're gonna do is reach out to council and ask for funding consideration, and we'll have, I mean, by, by virtue of these being open forums and, and having a placeholder for open comment before we close the line tonight, we'll certainly have that opportunity.
Well, and, okay.
Okay, so going back to what I just recommended, how does that sit with folks? What looks spot and rigor around real financial requests related to comprehensive plan and pedestrian safety issues, and then as time and, and energy allows, we can take on?
Yeah, comprehensive plan, I mean, that's gonna be, I mean, that shouldn't be hard to put a budgetary number to and, and, uh, ask comp for the pedestrian safety issues, that's gonna be take a little, we're gonna have to figure that and what, that's all gonna be involved in before we, you know, start asking.
Yeah, agree, agree, so Joe, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, or, or council members, I think if I flip back to the calendar that we had come up with, I think the, the requests, Joe, maybe this is you reviewing. When would you guys need to have that on your desk in order for twenty twenty-one planning cycles?
Well, normally, we start working on budgets or conversations in October.
Okay.
And sometimes earlier, but, I mean, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Do you agree, Joe Carr?
I would agree.
All right, so we've got two, two months worth of formal meetings as well as time in between to start framing up a little bit of what two looks like. One, I guess, Mike, I'm a little bit more optimistic that, you know, I mean, in quick research, it looked like comprehensive plans and Joe Cowery might be able to keep me honest, here was anywhere from thirty-five to fifty-five thousand over the course of multiple years, so if we were to budget that at, you know, two years optimistically, we were asking for, you know, twenty K. Seems like it would be.
Think that'd be a good place to start, Tim, I'm, and again, I'm just thinking two-to-three-year effort, but you're gonna need to grow in like the traffic study, that's gonna have to be a significant piece of that. The only question in my mind right now is, you know, at what time in the development of the, of a comprehensive plan do we want to be addressing traffic?
Yeah.
Uh, to me, that would be, you know, something that's, when we're maybe halfway or, or almost three-quarters of the way through, and we have some feel for what we're looking at, you know, and land use and some of the flooding issues, and then we would wanna say, okay, how does traffic impact that or fit into that overall plan? So I'm thinking seriously, a three-year program, but have it. seriously, a three year program, but have it structured so that it develops in well-defined phases that tend to make sense with the flow of a comprehensive plan and you know, it would take us some effort to sit down and write that up and come up with a phased approach. Uh, but that's kind of what my thoughts are right at the moment.
Yeah, and I would think Larry too, that's probably part of what we can ask about in an RFP and, you know, presentations as well, right? You're, we've got an interest.
Exactly, yeah.
This up in a logical way, present us a plan of how you would think about doing that, and that could line us up for you know, where in that effort would they force him taking on something like that?
That's a, yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking. I mean, it's uh, the only question again in my mind is, you know, if we put together some kind of a uh skeletonized RFP now and put that on the street, doesn't cost us any money to have consultants look at that and come in and talk to us.
Right.
You know, that's, that's all frankly free services. It's business development for them.
Yep.
Uh, we could take a couple of months, you know, maybe we tell Joe, hey, Joe, we need twenty twenty five thousand for next year. And we're gonna get back to you with exactly what we expect to be able to do in that first year, but at least we have a budget allocation.
Yeah.
You're good, you're good with that, right, Joe?
I did make sense, and I think it's something that we could get started on an RFP to at least start to dialogue, at least get that rolling along. It makes sense to me.
I appreciate that. I was actually looking at the other Joe, and I noticed he's being quiet. Right.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute.
Yeah, right.
From uh leading that effort, is that something that Joe Cower, you would head up and we contribute to, or would you be looking for planning commission to to write back?
I wouldn't expect you guys to write that. Uh, I put a draft together, and if I could get your feedback to help polish it, I I would hope that that could be done.
I'm more than willing to to help you on that, Joe, so.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so let's, let's go with that plan and a new comprehensive plan. Um, starting to put together a skeleton RFP, putting a feeler out there, doing that in a way that allows us to phase and get a feel for what's twenty one versus twenty two, et cetera. Um, on the pedestrian safety issues, unless anybody wants to raise their hand to lead that, I know that that's a particular issue and passion of Dale's. I suspect he would be willing to take that on and start to frame that out. Well, let me ask this, just not getting a a free pass to the entire group. Is somebody willing to partner with Dale on framing that out?
You know, Dale need, if Dale would like to, I'll be more happy to work with Dale on that, but I know he's gonna wanna he's gonna wanna spearhead that.
Yeah.
And I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm talking out of school either.
Agree. Thank you, Mike. Okay, that gives us at least a little bit of a North Star going into next two months worth of discussions. Um, any other from the planning commission specific to the scoring exercise, any other questions or thoughts before we open it for comment?
I'm good.
Okay. Dick, good from your side?
Yeah, I'm good. It's just when you get involved in this comprehensive plan, first in selecting who you want to interview, but when you go through the interview processes, um, I think you're looking probably at a five or six month process total.
For selection?
Yeah, by the time you get somebody selected.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
And and I think, you know, Larry's comment the last meeting about getting somebody that does this for a living, cuz the last plan we had, I don't think um, she was real astute, um, with comprehensive plans.
I'll tell you what we're gonna struggle with, Dick. There aren't a lot of firms anymore that do planning for a living. And I'm aware of one. Uh, I don't know if there are any others.
Well, you're you're the one that would be the resource on that.
Yeah, I mean, there are some smaller uh one horse shops uh and some of them, and it used to be some really good ones. Uh, but the environmental planning and design and Pashak might be one. I'm not sure that they're actually a land use planner as much as they are a landscape architect firm, but you know, we've
Well, I always.
Need to fish around and find at least two or three.
I was gonna say, of all the the boroughs and townships that we've got relationships with, and I know just from from looking at at a couple of others um, who have done things more recently, we could probably put out feelers and get, you know, recommendations and thoughts from other folks who have recently gone through this too.
Yeah, it might be Joe, something Joe Carr, something you can do is to reach out to other municipalities and find out who they're using.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, I I could do that.
I'd also be able to help cuz of my contacts that I have at all the different municipalities that are clients of mine, so I'll I'll reach there too.
Right.
And and just to bridge on that, I worked with Pashak in the past on a comp plan, but like you said, it was more about the looks rather than traffic engineering.
Right, right. You know, and it might well be, you know, even like an environmental planning and design, they probably would have to sub out the traffic engineering, cuz I don't know that they have traffic engineers on staff, but they do have the big picture understanding of how that all works together. So and I'm not pushing them, they're just a firm that I happen to know over the years.
We're familiar with them already.
What's that?
They're the ones who worked on Baldwin Street for us.
Okay, yeah, right. Pashak was, right, or EPD?
EPD.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's who it was.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. Larry, anything else from your side before we?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we've got a couple of visitors. Looks like Pat's on the phone right now. Um, Bob, you wanna?
No, let let Pat go first.
Okay. Um, comprehensive plan. And I I I realize that it's unanimous. Each one of you put your thought into the comprehensive plan, and so I'm sort of the voice out here, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Here's your comprehensive plan. This plan was done in two thousand and five. Here is your traffic study and parking analysis. Okay, I believe most of the members of the planning commission have the comprehensive plan. It isn't the first comprehensive plan. You've got lots of them. It's a great governmental bureaucratic process. You will get a budget, and then as was pointed out by some really smart people, over the next two to three years, you'll come up with another document. And it will sit on the shelf. My concern with the comprehensive plan isn't the twenty grand that it's gonna cost. My concern is that that will be the focus of the planning commission for the next three years, or two or whatever. Okay, and at the end of the day, the recommendations in the comprehensive plan may or may not be different than the ones that have been made in the last four. Okay, you know, you you look at this, and it's interesting to look at the names, okay? Right now on here, okay? The the only contin- the only consistent ones right now are, uh, you know, you've got Colosimo on here. We've got De Blasio, my dad here. It's just another group trying to come up with a plan, and I don't mind that, but I would look at implementing. Now, you know, you point out pedestrian safety. Great, you've got some people that are gonna work on it. The other piece that seems to have some traction is the north end. Maybe you put something in your budget request for actual detailed drawings that can supplant Mike Haberman's drawing on the north end. Maybe you try and get some budgetary money, not to, you know, to actually look at areas and and come up with actual plans to be put forth to be implemented. We have ideas. What we are lacking is specificity and project. And the planning commission should be the home to come up with that specificity and those projects. You talked about, yes, it was environmental planning and design that after a year or two, came up with a plan for the Baldwin Street area. Didn't like it, but you haven't moved forward to adjust that plan to something, to something more in the planning commission. Council's taken pieces of it and run with it. That's what I was alluding to before the meeting. But the planning commission has not grabbed any piece that, hey, this is our plan or our recommendation to council for what we should do in any of those pieces. Thank you.
So Pat, I got a question. In your concept, the the planning commission develops a comprehensive plan, who implements it?
I council implements it, but Larry, here's the thing about the, oh, hold on a second. But I I understand, but the planning commission has some role in 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 detailing the plan. Okay, now you have a comprehensive plan that says we're supposed to be looking at traffic. It's in there, okay? The north end, the pedestrian safety, the small town charm, all of those things are in the comprehensive plan. Now, shouldn't the, doesn't the planning commission have a role in the details? Don't they implement, don't they come along with recommending to council here are the details of how we would like to solve the north end?
I don't think so. No, I don't agree with that.
Okay, so you then then their role is purely to do a comprehensive plan and walk away? But they don't have a planning role in you know, in the, I mean, I agree with you, there's very little role for the planning commission. It's a recommending body and it doesn't do it. It doesn't have any anything else. But I was hoping that, you know, this group of people would actually look to get some some details, cuz council's not.
Well, and, you know, we can't force council to spend money, obviously, and the detail, the devil's always in the details. You know, and some of these things like a traffic plan, you're gonna hire a traffic engineer and they're gonna give you the detail. You're not gonna come up with that detail. I'm not gonna come up with that detail. That's what you hire a professional consultant for, and either council does or doesn't hire them.
Right, and that's what my my hope was, is that the planning commission would ask council to hire a traffic engineer to work on whatever project the planning commission thought was good, and there seems to be some traction to pedestrian safety and the north end. So my hope is that the planning commission will recommend to council that they budget some money for a traffic engineer and that the home for that could be the planning commission, so that the traffic engineer would report back to the planning commission to come up with a plan for solving the problem.
Excuse me, can I interrupt Pat and everybody?
Sure, sure.
Uh, excuse me. The, uh, excuse me, thank you. Uh, the uh, the comprehensive plan, I I it's great that everybody understands the importance of focusing on the comprehensive plan, but you can't wait, excuse me, two or three years before you devise the road network that is gonna be part, or or you envision as being part of the comprehensive plan. The road network in both the central business district and the Baldwin Street Business District is going to determine uh the economic future and stability of the community. It it it's going to determine where the central business district and the Baldwin Street Business District can be redeveloped to attract businesses to generate uh uh tax revenues. And I might mention uh, I from what I've seen, the the greatest amount of money, the millions that are spent in various communities seem to be through, you know, PennDOT or the county road building people and the roads that they widen and improve and add traffic lights and all that stuff. But how those monies are spent is entirely, or not entirely, it's ninety percent political. I just remember uh something I read five years ago, is they, the the national study they did on the road building in the country, they said it was like almost all political. The specific fact that I still remember was nineteen eighty one, the number earmarks are the things that the local elected officials take from, you know, a five hundred billion dollar uh federal legislation bill and spend it where they want to. But nineteen eighty one, there were only ten earmarks on the federal highway bill. In two thousand and five, that wasn't that long ago, it grows to six thousand. It's and and the reason that uh I'm not, uh, I Bridgeville, I think you, the planning commission, I think you guys are the brains of the community here, no respect, Bill, but now you guys are the leaders and you don't have to be re-elected. I think that, excuse me, you should concentrate on developing a comprehensive solution to the traffic problem in Bridle, both the north, north-south problem and the east-west problem, because that way you're gonna get and and you've gotta get, uh, it's important that you have some graphics and costs and so on to present the PennDOT and the county and SPC and everybody else, because that's the way you're gonna get Collier and Safet and Upper St. Clair and Scott to support Bridle's comprehensive road network, and it's and it's gonna take political force like that for us to get the money. Planning, what what good is the planning, uh, if we never, as Pat mentioned, um, you've got to to develop a plan that will convince the federal state and the highway, this federal state and county, uh, accountants that Bridle's capable of generating great, a great deal more federal, state and county tax revenues for them. I I I I I'm I'm thrilled that you guys are recognize the importance of the comprehensive plan, but please, uh, focus in on immediately giving, uh, Larry, uh, Larry, I thought Leonard Smith did a lot of uh road design, or am I wrong?
We're not a traffic engineering firm, no.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know that. I I I got the impression that you were, oh, that's all right. I mean, I I agree with you. It's up to uh the planning commission to run down the, to find the people to do it, but I I, you know, with a two trillion dollar road bill going through Congress right now, uh, Bridgeville's gotta have our plan and the cost of our comprehensive plan right up there upfront. We wanna be first in line, and we need to make presentations to those funding agencies that will get us the money that we need. And sadly, I I I'm not against plan, Pat's uh, being interested in the north end improvement or widening, but please, don't, you've gotta do the whole program, not just the north end program, because if you do that, then this PennDOT and the county will say, well, we gave you four million dollars to uh uh build a wider bridge over the north, north end bridge, the creek, and we did that, so we're gonna keep, you're gonna have to wait for another fifteen years. You've got to do a comprehensive plan. You will definitely, in my opinion, get the political support of four different municipalities, and you'll be, you'll be able to uh uh, get millions to build the road system that we need very badly.
Yeah, let me just say this to all that, Bob. I mean, if we're not, if you're not on PennDOT and SPC's twelve-year plan, you're not gonna get consideration. Uh, and and I know we've had traffic studies over the years. How many of the traffic studies that the borough has undertaken have ended up on SPC's twelve-year program?
Well, let me, let me, let me respond to that, Larry. I I've been surveying the SPCs, that's the Southwestern Pennsylvania Planning Commission's uh, building schedule for the last ten years. They have a specific list of probably fifty projects from
Right, are we on that list?
Different counties. Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I give you, well, the point I'm trying to make is they readjust that list. I'll give you a perfect example. The seven-lane bridge over the creek between um Bridle and Safet has been put on that list. It it was moved up, I don't, it wasn't even on the list. Now it was uh to be done in two to three years, but that list can change. Don't, don't get, uh, let's not get overwhelmed or about the what we're up against. Uh, Bridgeville, we can make, uh, if we do a comprehensive plan that helps four different communities, all of those communities will help uh move our project. plan that helps four different communities, all of those communities will help, uh, move our project up to the top. Yeah, crap, I think there, the past two or three that I saw, it's interesting, every year, Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon are getting, they're in the top three. You know, don't, don't get discouraged, I, I have confidence in you guys now with the new leadership and the new engineer, I think we can do great things, but, uh, uh, think positive. Your comprehensive plan, everything that we need in the community in terms of roads and parking should be in the comprehensive plan. Don't start thinking about what you're gonna have to pay for, because you're gonna have to pay for them very much. Because, uh, the, the Washington Pike traffic congestion problem, that's PennDOT's responsibility. We've gotta remind them and everybody else that it's their responsibility, not Bridgeville's.
Okay, thanks, Bob, thank you, Pat. Any other public comment, it looks like maybe Tim might be the only other guest tonight.
I'd like, I'd, I'd like to add one more piece, if I might, Tim.
What?
Multi-municipal comprehensive plan. I, I was just, South F A F comprehensive plan was adopted in twenty thirteen. Collier Townships was adopted in twenty thirteen. You know, they're supposed to be on a ten-year cycle. A multi-municipal comprehensive plan would be a different, would be a different approach here that might be very beneficial to the region.
Yes, that's right.
One of the things that's lacking in our comprehensive plan that keeps it on the shelf is that the problems that it's trying to solve are regional. And doing a multi-municipal comprehensive plan with South F A F and more Collier would possibly get a much better product.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting idea. Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me, I'd like, not to interrupt again, but I wanna pre, uh, mention one more fact. Uh, Safet's comprehensive, when, when Mike Benton, the engineer up at Safet, uh, we're, we're, you know, we're working together for several years, we're at four or five years, I guess. At any rate, uh, his, he designed a comprehensive plan for Safet, that would be the Washington Pike part. It was to be four lanes from the post office in Bridgeville through the Safet Business District, all the way up to, uh, the Boyce Road intersection, two and a half miles away. And what PennDOT did six months ago, or twelve months ago, is reduce the flow, flu, the through traffic lanes through Safet, coming into Bridgeville from four lanes to two. They violated Safet's only own comprehensive master plan, and I don't, the officials in Safet, I don't think you were, are aware of it. But, but primarily, I think, we, we're all, I think, starting to see the light. We need a comprehensive plan that will help Safet, Bridgeville, Collier and Upper St. Clair primarily, and put together that political mechanism, and we will get more money than you can imagine. I am certain of it, I've talked to different people, and they've, they've told me that unless Bridgeville comes, does, agrees with such a multi-community, as Pat mentioned, regional solution to the traffic problem, we're, we aren't gonna be getting very much of anything.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob, I'm not sure that that's a topic for a comprehensive plan so much as it is a regional traffic study. And those communities that you mentioned need to get together and address, if, if that's the case, they all need to get together and draft, address traffic as a standalone topic. I'm not sure that that's an issue for us as our, as our comprehensive plan, I mean, you know, our comprehensive plan's gonna be looking at a whole lot of other things other than just, you know, a regional traffic issue.
Yeah, Larry, you know the problem, it was the Bridgeville officials, not you guys, but the, the previous Bridgeville officials. When PennDOT wanted to solve the North South traffic congestion problem, for thirty years, Bridgeville officials refused to even discuss the, the point, it's so, it's up to Bridgeville now to, to, to the, it's up to Bridgeville now to design it. Then, and, 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 and all of the roads, all the regional roads in the area lead to frickin' Bridgeville. We've got to be where the initiative starts for the plan, but then I agree with you, Larry, once we design a multi-community plan, then we can take it to the other, uh, uh, people, and I'm certain, uh, they'll support it.
Okay, I appreciate the discussion.
This is, this is one of the best, this is the best traffic planning commission meeting I've attended in a long time, congratulations, guys, I really mean that.
Thank you, I appreciate the discussion, the input, uh, especially appreciate the effort that went into the last couple of months of thinking through these things, uh, on behalf of the planning commission. So, um, with that said, I would take in motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Don't move. Okay, good night, everybody, thanks.
Okay, thank you.